We'll call the meeting to order for legislative session 2019-16 for the Wycomico County Council. It will be in August 6, 2019. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Praise Your Allegiance, please do.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy knowledge is greater than the power of the Lord. I would like to testify that I am the United States of America, and to the God for which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Entertain a motion from council to approve the legislative minutes from July 16, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from June 18 in reference to the quarterly stormwater management discussion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from June 18 in reference to the Lower Shore Water Force Alliance.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from July 2 in reference to opioid litigation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from July 2, 2019, in reference to the amendment to the 2020-24 CIP for the Riverside Boat Ramp.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from July 2 in reference to the lease of the Child Advocacy Center.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, minutes are approved. This time we open the floor, well, we don't open the floor, but we're going to go to the podium here. I have two proclamations. One is for President Mary Ashanti, President NAWACP. It's in Academic Preparation Month. And following that, we're going to read a proclamation to recognize the 2020 Census Operational Plans. Lori Carter is going to be receiving that proclamation, and anyone who would like to join her associated with the 2020 Census.
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. Whereas earning a diploma from high school is one of the most cherished things that a person can experience in his or her life and one of the greatest achievements. And whereas attending school daily and having the support of parents to achieve this goal is the best approach to reduce the dropout rates in our school system and to show children that they are truly cared about and supported. And whereas by encouraging students to remain in school, to learn and to help students understand the importance of following directions and honoring rules as life skills, mentoring each student to learn the value of self-respect and respect for others is essential to their lives. And whereas the clearest path for a child to become a productive and responsible citizen is support and encouragement to stay in school, stay out of trouble, and get good grades, by doing this and receiving a high school diploma, the foundation on which to build a productive life may be realized, and the students will see that their dreams can come true. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Wycomico County Council that August 2019 be and is hereby proclaimed Academic Preparation Month. The County Council encourages all citizens and parents to encourage our children to be successful citizens, done this first day of August 2019.
All right, thank you, Mary.
First, good night to God and thanking Him for the opportunity to be here tonight. And for the young people in the audience, no, this is not the way you come dressed to a business meeting. But we have National Night Out at the park, and it's a great event, and we have a table there. So I need to go back there, and this is how you dress. So on behalf of the NAACP, I want to thank the County Council for its continued support of education and the NAACP's effort to obtain academic greatness for all students. On August 1, President Cannon, Sheriff Lewis, State's Attorney Jamie Dykes, Mayor Jake Day, Assistant Superintendent Kim Miles, and of course, Mr. Dunn, the Principal of Salisbury Middle School, and Dr. Michael Mitchell gave greetings to the students at the Back to School Rally. It was very moving and motivational. We gave school supplies to, we gave 334 bags of school supplies. Our goal is always at least a minimum of 300. Today, at the park, I thought we were going to be able to take something home, which we didn't want to. We had mounds of school supplies, and as I speak, they are gone. So, but we will be giving school supplies to another organization that's doing that. And just want to remind young people out there that on August 25 at the Civic Center, there'll be school supplies. And so there's no reason why any young person in Wycomico County should go to school without proper school supplies, because churches, organizations, everyone is out there giving it. We round off the Academic Preparation Month by having our monthly meeting on August 22, 7:00 at Chipman Culture Center. And since this is Academic Preparation Month, our topic will be education. We will have Ms. Shane Martin, the 2019 Teacher of the Year, as our speaker. And we'll have light refreshments. We're hoping that parents and students will come, because we want to talk about how to involve parents, students, and educators in the success of students and working together. So we appreciate everything that you all do. Yes, sometime I do have words with you and love, but we appreciate everything that you do, and keep up the good work. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shani.
Ms. Carter, I know you're here. And again, I'm very serious. Anyone associated with the Census Bureau, please come on up here, and if you're on part of the committee, don't hesitate to come up, because it is important. You might as well get your face up here so people know who you are and who's supporting all of this. John, if you want to come, you certainly may. So I think you can see by the group of people who are here tonight just how important this is to this organization and to the county. If y'all want to take pictures, by the way, give the camera to anybody you want, and it's informal, okay? We're not that worried about what happens, as long as you get, you know, good pictures, recognition, get the right side. John, you want me to?
Yeah, you want me to?
So, but anyway.
Tell me what to hit.
A group of people, pretty much independently, I think, got together and said, you know, we have issues in Wycomico County, but we want to make sure that every citizen in Wycomico County is counted with this census that's coming out. And it's so important that we've met, what, at least three times now, with probably at least, I'd say, 200 people that are involved in this process from all aspects of society. And this is just a few that are helping to represent the overall picture of what needs to be done in Wycomico County. Because if we don't get counted, we don't get funding, we don't get recognition, we will not be able to move forward and take advantage of everything that we need to in order to prosper as much as we would like to and should as Wycomico County. So, this is a proclamation I'm going to read, and it has a lot to say. Excuse me? Would you like to read it?
No, thank you.
You read it right, that's all I want.
I'll tell you. This is a proclamation partnering with the 2020 Census Bureau to help ensure an accurate count for Wycomico County. Whereas approximately $675 billion per year in federal funding is distributed to communities based in part on census data, and whereas an accurate census count is vital to determining where to locate schools, childcare, senior centers, roads, public transportation, and hospitals, and for making decisions concerning business growth and housing needs. And whereas the 2020 census creates jobs that stimulate economic growth and increase employment, and whereas the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law under Title 13 U.S. Code, and whereas, as a partner, local government, along with Wycomico 2020 Count Census Committee, will do the following: Support the goals and ideals for the 2020 census and disseminate 2020 census information to encourage those in the community to participate. Encourage the community to place an emphasis on the 2020 census and participate in events and initiatives that will raise overall awareness and ensure a full and accurate census. Support census takers in helping the community complete an accurate count and create or seek opportunities to collaborate with other like-minded groups in the community by participating in complete count committees and/or utilizing stakeholders' trusted voices to advocate on behalf of the 2020 census. Therefore, be it resolved that Wycomico County Council proclaims that Wycomico County's governing body and administration is committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau to help ensure a full and accurate count in 2020, done this sixth day of August 2019. So, there we go. Thank you. Thank you.
We want to say thank you to the County Council, to our County Executive, Bob Culver, for his work and helping us to come together for this great, as it was stated, a very needed, much important adventure that we're about to take. I want to thank each and every one that has been serving and working with the county. I want to formally introduce the co-chairs. That would be Dr. Bronte Dashiel and also Ms. Sonia Whitehead. I'm going to have them to come forward quickly and just to kind of share some thoughts. Thank you.
Good evening. So, since the proclamation had a lot of the information in it, it's to be brief. We actually, Dr. Bronte and I, went this morning to the Maryland Complete Count Committee in Crownsville. And so we got a lot of learning there. We have met three times. We are at the stage now of developing those subcommittees. And some of these events, such as today, some people were talking about National Night Out. So we did not make that event, but we hope to be at the fresh start, and some of these other events that we already have in the community, but also establish our own. What we're looking for, I won't even just say support, but support, from the different aspects of the community, both to make sure that people take the census, but even the education part. We know that there's been some, you know, some conversation about the census overall. We need to educate, make sure people understand that funding comes, you know, is dependent on the census. And basically, a number that was stated today that we know of as well, I think it was $18,250 in the state of Maryland for every person that is not counted, that's what you lose for each person over the 10-year span. So it is very, very important for our funding, for our community, et cetera. So we're happy to take on this endeavor and look for everybody to be counted. I know everybody in here will take the census, so I don't even have to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want people to volunteer for our subcommittees. Our next meeting is August 19 at Cypress Street Firehouse, so at 2:00. Please come. We need people to help volunteer to get people in for the subcommittees. So I'm looking out, looking forward to seeing people in the community there. Thank you so much.
I want also saying, and we'll be done, we want to formally introduce John Watson IV, who is the Census 2020 Outreach, is it fourth?
It is the fourth.
Oh, it is the fourth, okay. Let me make sure I have this right. Who is the Census 2020 Outreach Coordinator for the Eastern Shore. This is John Watson. So we're going to definitely be working with us to make sure we get everyone counted in Wycomico County. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Hurley.
Good evening, Council President, Council Members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item we have on the agenda this evening is the swearing-in of Ms. Nicole Ackley, Ackley, if I pronounced that correctly, as Wycomico County District Two Representative. And we have Mr. Beau McAllister here, Clerk of Circuit Court, to do the oath of office.
Do swear or affirm?
The vote, because you're speaking with, I'm sorry to break it up, but they can't hear you if you don't speak into the microphone.
Okay.
Sorry, if you don't mind starting, or it's better for it.
I'll clear it this way. Okay.
I state your name.
Nicole Ackley.
Do swear or?
Do swear or?
It's a hot night, people, pick up a lot. Maybe if everybody could get behind the shoe, we could get in the water.
I wonder why.
Okay, that'll be probably better.
All right. I state your name.
Nicole Ackley.
Do swear or affirm?
Do swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Wycomico County Councilwoman.
Wycomico County Councilwoman.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Great job.
Thank you.
I'll give you this pen here.
Okay.
Great.
Got this, John.
Hmm?
You got this.
Anybody want to speak then?
First time.
Yeah.
Thank you, fellow councilmen. I'd like to thank Ms. Hurley and Ms. Sandy for their time and patience in orienting me and updating me on the duties of council in a very short week. They've been very patient with all of my questions. I would also like to thank our County Executive, Mr. Culver, and his staff for meeting with me this past week and planning meetings for me with the department heads, so I can have a better understanding of how the county works. I would like to thank the outpour of support from the municipalities and the constituents of District Two. Thank you. I am humbled today to accept this nomination to represent District Two. Thank you to the Republican Central Committee for the confidence in putting my name forward. The privilege of this nomination comes with a serious charge, that is, to ultimately serve the people of Wycomico County. The responsibilities of leadership rest in the language of the county charter. As such, I look forward to working in partnership with my colleagues on the council, the county's executive office, the Wycomico County Board of Education, and the municipalities within Wycomico County. I would like to take this moment to introduce my wonderful family, my son Alexander. He is a sixth-grade student at Salisbury Middle School. My daughter, my daughter Grace, who is a, is going to be a junior at James M. Bennett. My middle daughter, Gwendolyn, who is unable to be here tonight. And finally, my husband, Dr. Fernando Ackley. He reminds me daily that I have a voice, so use it. Thank you for your support.
Great. Thank you, and again, congratulations. I would also like to recognize, before we get a public hearing, we do have Sarah Bynum King from the Town of Delmar, the Town Manager. Sarah, good to see you. Also like to recognize April Jackson, City Council. April, good to see you. And of course, you've already met Beau McAllister, Clerk of the Court. Thank you all for being here tonight. Ms. Hurley?
Next on the agenda is Resolution Number 111, 2019, amend the Wycomico County Water and Sewer Plan to replace Section 4.2.3, and to amend the Sewer Map 3 to show tax map 12, parcel 4, lots 3A-1AA, being designated as served by sewer number one. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the Daily Times, stating that a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 p.m.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 111, 2019. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing for Resolution 111, 2019. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 111, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried, resolution passes.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 112, 2019, to amend the fiscal year's 2020-2024 capital budget to add a new project titled UAS Center for Innovation for the Salisbury Ocean City Wycomico Regional Airport, and to accept grant funds from the Maryland Department of Commerce in an amount of $100,000. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the Daily Times, stating a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing, for a public hearing on Resolution Number 112, 2019. Anybody that would like to comment on this resolution, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. This concludes the public hearing on Resolution 112, 2019. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 112, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 113, 2019, approving a lease agreement between Wycomico County, Maryland, and the Wycomico County Department of Social Services, located in the State's Attorney's Building. And again, a public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the Daily Times, stating that a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 p.m.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 113, 2019. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. This concludes the public hearing on Resolution 113, 2019. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 113, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried, resolution passes.
Next is a presentation on Wycomico County Goes Purple, and we have Christina Bowie Simpson and Mr. David A. Fitzgerald here.
Hey. Good evening.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you for taking the opportunity to meet with us tonight, so we can give you a briefing on Wycomico Goes Purple. We're going to use the website as our outline. I'll turn it over to Chrissy Bowie Simpson. She's our opioid coordinator for the county, if you haven't met her. And I think you know me, David Fitzgerald, I'm the emergency management coordinator, also the operations chief of the opioid intervention team for Wycomico County. So Chrissy, I'll let you, I'll drive, and she's going to go through why we started out with Wycomico Goes Purple. One thing I will start out, it's not Wycomico County government, it's Wycomico geographically that's going purple. So it's all municipalities, it's all our private partners, and we'll get to that a little further in the brief presentation we're going to do. But it is Wycomico as a geographic area going purple to raise awareness. So Chrissy, I'll let you.
Yes, thank you. So we start, you know, what is Go Purple? Go Purple is ultimately an awareness campaign focused on prevention, treatment, and recovery. But it also highlights the important role that our enforcement agencies play in combating this crisis in our community. It's our hope that this awareness campaign will engage our community and our youth to stand up against substance abuse. And by turning things purple, we hope that conversations will be started that may have not otherwise taken place.
So as Chrissy said, we have many supporters. We have a, underneath the opioid intervention team, we have a group of people that meet, and we have lots of partners. So our presenting partner is Peninsular Regional Medical Center, and I'm not going to read each one, but they have also committed a lot of time. They've also donated funds. We have the Community Foundation, the Eastern Shore is our financial partner, so donations can be made to them. And what our funds are used for is for items that we're going to leave a packet with Ms. Hurley that can be given to council members, so you can wear, put things on your vehicles, you can wear lapel pins if you like, or lanyards. Again, it's, as Chrissy said, we want to start conversation and talk about the crisis here in Wycomico County. So as you can see, we have many, many supporters that come out to our meetings. We're meeting monthly, and we're having events come up, which we'll get to in a few seconds.
So we do have some items that can be purchased online. One of the main items that we have right now are the Wycomico Goes Purple t-shirts. These purchase, or these can be purchased at the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce. They are $10.50. Again, all of the money that we earn there goes right back into the Wycomico Goes Purple Fund, which allows us to continue to purchase items and hold events and partner in events that, again, just promote this very important campaign.
So we've had several events on our, on the website. We were out at Third Friday, that was our kickoff event. Of course, we had a proclamation from County Council and the city of Salisbury, and the other municipalities are engaged as well. So we have some photos on there, and we'll be adding photos tonight. We're doing double duty. We're here before you, and we're going to run back to the National Night Out that we've been to for the last several hours. So other events that we have coming up, the most important one that we'd like to talk about is August 31. That's our Go Purple kickoff event. It's going to be at Shorebird Stadium. Hudson Health has partnered, and they are sponsoring the fireworks that night. It's also the county night that they're going to attend, that the employees are going to attend the Shorebird Stadium and kickoff Wycomico Goes Purple. And it's also overdose awareness day. Just waiting for the internet.
Yep, so we do have a lot of resources that are available in the county. We have a county resource guide. Also, you'll be able to find here on the website, very easy access. You will click a PDF link, and that will take you directly to all the treatment providers that are located here in the county. So those struggling with addiction can easily navigate this website and find those treatment providers. Also, Maryland Before It's Too Late is another great resource for the community, public service announcements, a lot of things that are going on at the state level with the Opioid Operational Command Center can be with the opioid operational command center can be found on that website. We're really promoting the 10 prescription drop-off locations that we have here to dispose, or here in the county, to dispose of unwanted or expired medications. Also, the Good Samaritan Law, which is very important. We do find that individuals are still leaving people in bathtubs. And, you know, it, it is very sad. So we continue to promote the Good Samaritan Law in hopes that we can save lives. Also, a lot of information about naloxone distribution and the various trainings that occur throughout the county. And then, of course, the CDC, Center for Disease Control, always has a lot of up-to-date information around the opioid epidemic and current, current statistics.
So one of the resources that we have also, and I have a small, just a small picture on the website showing, is our Wacomiko County Opioid Intervention Team educational trailer, and that is deployed tonight at National Night Out. We've had training on it with all our volunteer partners. Came out last week to the civic center, and they were trained. We also showed this trailer to the state O O C C. And you're welcome to, if you'd like to see it anytime, just let us know. It is out at National Night Out, and it'll be out at other events. So this is an educational trailer where both the young adults can be educated on the outside. Chrissy, give her kudos, came up with a nice game wheel outside where they can spin the wheel and answer questions and engage the young adults while the parents are inside. And the purpose for the parents to come inside, so we can have a conversation with them, start a conversation. And in the front of the trailer, it has a small kitchen, a small RV up front. So it's a small kitchen, a bathroom, and a bedroom. And we will show those parents hiding spots, and we will engage in conversation with the parents on resources they, they may need while the young adults are outside. And hopefully, we will make an impact with this trailer. And as Chrissy said, it's not events that we are putting on always as the O I T. We're partnering with other agencies that are having events like National Night Out tonight, Friday night, overdose awareness day. And you can see the red items on the schedule. Anywhere you see red is where the trailer is going to be deployed. So it's going to be a busy August going into September. It's filling up, and we have other requests up into October. So we're pleased with the support that we're getting. The executive's office is very gracious to support the O I T, the county executives on the O I T, senior policy group, and we are trying to make a difference in Wacomiko County.
Absolutely. Addictions, you know, it's taking the lives of our community members. In 2018 alone, 36 people in Wacomiko County died of an overdose. And overdose is actually the leading cause of accidental death in people younger than 50. So it is a serious issue, and we just hope that by promoting this campaign and engaging in these activities and getting education out there, that we can really, you know, make a difference again, and start conversations that would not otherwise take place.
Any questions from council?
I have a question. Maryland Coalition of Families has a similar program with opioid addiction. And what, what they had done was put together a toolkit for educators to inform students on opioid addiction and other drug addictions. And I was wondering if you're offering any type of toolkit or guidance to be provided in the schools? Because as much as we would like to have everyone come out and see this, school is where we hit everybody.
Mm-hmm, exactly. And that is a goal for us to reach students. We certainly want to do that. And we have Maryland Coalition of Families who sits on our opioid intervention team. She's actually out manning the table while we came here. So I'll be sure to ask her about that when we get back. But sometimes it is a challenge getting certain information into the schools. But it is certainly something that we will try to do and that we continue to try to do.
Yeah, we received a letter, council received a letter from Steve Hsu. As you know, is the, who was down here not too long ago, the executive director of the opioid operational command center. And he, he had a lot of praise for what, you know, what we're doing with the, with the purple campaign, as well as with the code program. And Wacomiko County actually is very successful, I think, comparative to as far as statewide. We've had a lot of success with the programs, and this is just one more aspect of that to make it even better. I know, Dave, you took me inside the trailer. The trailer is very unusual. You can actually go in there, and there's a mock, as Dave said, there's a mock kitchen. And you can go in there, and you can sort of see where things may be hidden that you would never have anticipated could be hidden. And it's pretty, it's a pretty huge eye-opener, and it's kind of, kind of interesting. You could, you could create a game out of that, find three items or whatever, and when it teaches.
And some of our O I T partners, when I took them into the trailer, that's what I said. I said, do you want me to give you the tour, or do you want to try to find things under?
Yeah, right, sure.
Yes, absolutely. It's, it's, it's eye-opening for sure, and, and a lot of people have been very engaged. Tonight's our first large event. So people have been very engaged in the trailer, and they've found it very informative.
Great, great. Well, it's, it's great planning, and we appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to leave this with Ms. Hurley?
Okay.
Good enough for all the council.
Thank you. The next two items on the agenda are resolutions pertaining to enterprise zone applications. Council is familiar with these enterprise applications as they've been on the council agenda for, I believe, the last two meetings. But for the public's benefit, in order for a business to qualify for enterprise zone, for enterprise zone benefits, it must meet one of the two statutory requirements. And that is that they must either invest in more than $50,000 in the improvements at the loca, or at the business in the zone, or they must hire more than two employees since they've been located in the zone. The first resolution is resolution number 114, 2019, declaring that 112 Market Street LLC is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property at 122 East Market Street, Salisbury, Maryland. And we do have Laura Soper here with the city of Salisbury.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 114, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions for Ms. Soper? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 114, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 115, 2019, declaring that affiliated power purchasers and our national LLC, also known as A P P I Energy, and 112 Market Street LLC are eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property at 112 East Market Street, Salisbury, Maryland.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 115, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Soper, I did have one question on this. I think we had touched on it briefly, if you'd have a second, we appreciate it. The question really was, is it, it seems somewhat unusual that this was a resolution for enterprise zone on a combination of two businesses. I don't think we've ever had one for two businesses. Normally, it's always separated out.
Yeah, so in this case, the applicant, you can file for both credits under the same application. So the real property credit goes to the property owner, which is 112 Market Street LLC. And the business at that location is A P P I. So they filed under the same application, but they are eligible for both state income and real property credit. So that's why you see them together.
Okay, so, and of course, we, we don't, we don't question much of it because we're probably business on, on pretty much any initiative. But, so you're saying that both, each individual company will sa, will receive the same benefits?
So 112 Market LLC will receive the real property credit for the property at 112 East Market Street and at 120 East Market Street, which was the previous resolution.
Okay.
And A P P I will qualify for the state income credit and will file for that on their state income taxes as A P P I.
Okay. So we're splitting up the whole benefits of, of the process?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay. If they had, just out of curiosity, if they had filed separately, they would have both qualified anyway, wouldn't they be correct? Or I guess not, because maybe A P P doesn't have property?
Yeah, A P P I is not the property owner at that location. So they would not have qualified. It's done on a property owner, tax account ID number basis.
All right, just, it was, it was a different spin, so I just thought we.
Yeah, it's a little, it was a little confusing, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, yes?
We actually, I had a chance to call her, and she explained the entire process to me. So I appreciate that, thank you.
It's a confusing program, but I'm here for any questions you guys have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of resolution 115, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is resolution number 116, 2019, approving a priority letter for the Maryland Department of Transportation's fiscal year 2021 through 2026 consolidate, consolidate transportation program. And Mr. Dallas Baker is here, if there are any questions.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 116, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Dallas, do you have anything you'd like to add to, to this processing? I know we've had discussions on it before, and.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works for the county. Yeah, just to recap, this is a letter that the county prepares and sends to the Department of Transportation, highlighting our transportation priority project, projects to MDOT. That includes projects at the airport, as well as transportation, safety, and capacity projects on the highway system throughout the county. We've, we've kind of touched on most of the projects last time. The only two changes that, from when we discussed it at work session versus now are to include the, the comments from you, Councilman Holloway, as regards to the signal at Mount Herman in Walston, and then also the request from.
Town of Willards.
Yes. So other than that, everything's similar to what we've seen in previous years.
Sure, thanks, good. Any questions? Thanks for putting it all together as well as you have, and Weston, thank you for your, for your assistance with it.
And Keith Hall also helped a lot, presented with all that stuff in there. So it's, it's collaborative between us in planning the zoning and moving, Keith.
Great, all right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 116, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you very much, Dallas.
Next is resolution number 117, 2019, a resolution confirming Paul D. Wilber Esquire with the law firm of Webb, Cornbrooks, Wilber, Voorhis, Douse, Leslie, and Mathers, L L P, to serve as county attorney and the head of the Department of Law. The county council on May 21st terminated the legal services of Paul D. Wilber and his firm effective July 31st, 2019. Following the termination, the county executive put the legal services out to bid. According to the RFP tabulation sheet posted on the county's website, three law firms submitted bid proposals. One is the law firm of Webb, Cornbrooks, Wilber, Voorhis, Douse, Leslie, and Mathers, L L P. The other two are the law offices of Hearn and Bailey, P.A., and Robert A. Benson with laws Ensley and Benson, P.A. Following the bid opening, the county executive submitted Paul D. Wilber and his firm as the county attorney, which is the request before council this evening.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 117, 2019.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Have a motion, second discussion.
I mean, I know we have, I don't know, Mr. Strasburg, Weston will make any comments or not. I know we have him here.
Anybody have any questions?
I mean, obviously, I, I know we had this before, but, and I was the only councilperson that voted not to terminate Mr. Wilber, but, you know, I think Mr. Wilber and his firm has done, have done a great job for the county. And I know since we've had that vote just out in the community among our constituents, I constantly have had people, you know, commenting as to the good job. I've had employees from the county contact me regarding the good job that he's done. And I can honestly, I can say I've not had one single constituent say he should be terminated. So, you know, I'd like to see us support him.
Yeah, I can, I can appreciate that, Councilwoman McCain. I mean, we all, I think, stated even during the discussion, during the vote, that we, you know, we, we thought a lot of Mr. Wilber, a set of unfortunate circumstances. And unfortunately, you know, due, due to the, the privacy concerns and the personnel issues, we, we can't really tell the public exactly what the council's concerns might be or what we're thinking. And there are times when we have to make decisions at this table and make them with the understanding of what, you know, what our concerns might be in the best interest of the county, even if we can't explain that word for word to the members of the county, to the, of the county, of the citizens of county. I was somewhat surprised to see that the executive would turn in a name of, for a county attorney, which would be the same name of an attorney who we just fired. I don't see the reasoning in that. I think to a certain degree, it creates unnecessary delays. And we all know that this is of the most important meaning, that this, that this has to get done, and it has to be come to some resolution. And to be quite frank, I think it's gone way too long. And we do recognize that there's a lot of emergent, immediate needs right now to get this done and to, to get a county attorney appointed for Wacomiko County. So saying so, just in discussion, I know that there were two other law firms. I think the county, the council would probably like to see what all the options are on the table, but we'll come to that at another time. Any other discussion? Josh?
Is, is it possible to get clarity with, we did receive a little bit of information on the rankings, it just said evaluator one, evaluator two, evaluator three, which I don't know what's able to be public or not able to be public. But it certainly wasn't clear to me as to how we arrived at the conclusion. The county executive's office decided that this would be, that this was the right individual to go forward with. And I don't have any strong feelings one way or another. And I think that Paul Wilber has done a decent job in the past. But I did, I don't know if there's any kind of way that we could get extra clarity as to evaluation process and how.
I think Mr. Young could probably answer that.
I think a tally came in with, with some results. Okay, Weston. I think a tally did come in with some results as far as how it was put together. How I understood it to be, Josh, was that the reason that Mr. Wilber's name was brought forth again was a matter of a difference in costs. I didn't think it was an extreme difference in, in, in the cost as far as contracting out. But that was the reason they took it at face value. This is, this is the least expensive, this is the one we're going to give you. I would like to see biographies, I would like to see something that tells us who the heck these people are and what they, what they bring to the table.
Sure, sure. So Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration. As mentioned, we had three firms bid. I don't have it in front of me, but on purchasing section of the county website in the bid documents, it explains how things are weighted. Three evaluators were, were chosen. Given that the county attorney is to represent both branches, we, we made a request to have somebody from the council office sit in. And so there, there's sort of two things we're looking at. One, in terms of the weighting, is going from memory, experience, working local government, having capacity. So, you know, we're a $150 million budget. We have a lot of, I, I know as of Mr. Wilber's termination, we had over 400 active cases. That's not lawsuits, that's, that's contracts and things they're reviewing. So it's more of a, more than a one-man job for, for certain. And there was also the cost. So from the ranking system, whether you spun it from experience in this type of work versus whether you spun it based on cost, Mr. Wilber's firm ranked, ranked the highest, and that, that's why the firm was put forward. Like, like most bids, if they're the ideal candidate, that's, that's who gets put forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
So there was only three bids put in?
Correct.
There was only three bids put in, or three bids considered?
Only, we only received three, three bids. Yes.
Was this format that you just explained, was that used four years ago?
I do not believe so.
Why, why was it used this time?
This is more similar to what we do with engineering firms, like with the public safety building and so forth like that, where we, where we have criteria. What is your experience doing similar projects? What are, you know? You know, I wasn't, I wasn't involved in the previous one. I don't know if, you know, Wayne knows how that process worked when we originally transitioned from an in-house law firm to a contractual basis. But what we saw from about fiscal year 14 and 15, when we had full staff, in-house staff, and what we have contractually over the last few years, we're saving a little over $100,000 a year, based on the information I have.
When I saw one-on-one with Greg Bassett, Mr. Covert, he said we were saving $300,000 a year.
I, I saw over $100,000 is, is mine. Now, it may be, it may be $300,000 over three years. Now, it may be, it may be $300,000 over three years, that I don't, I can't speak for his company.
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to make sure those numbers.
An answer to your question, Larry, I'm honestly not sure of what the process was at the time, four years ago. I do know that Bob interviewed several of the law firms in town, but it did not, to my knowledge, go through the purchasing department, through an RFP process. In this case, we felt it was very appropriate to do that. So in addition to the costs, and, you know, I don't want to name firms because I don't think that's appropriate.
I don't either.
But, but, but one firm, their submission was actually incomplete, so we still considered it, it was an incomplete submission. They were offering to take the work on at $200 an hour. The second firm had minimal government experience, they had government experience, but it was minimal, and their billing rate was $210 an hour. And Webb, Cornbrook, whatever that long name is, is $170 an hour. So we think that's a fairly significant difference when you're billing, you know, well over 2,000 hours a year. So, you know, that's really the reason that we put this forward.
Any other questions?
Any other questions we can answer or have to answer?
I just want to clarify, someone on the council sat in on these evaluations?
No, ma'am. We invited, we invited, but, but I think council decided that that was something that they didn't want to participate in. I'm not sure of the reasoning, but we did invite.
Is it possible to get clarity on the timing or why this is on the agenda for today? Is it, we have to confirm it within a certain amount of days after, is that?
Forty-five. We submitted on July something or other, and there's a 45 under Section 315 of the charter. I think there's a 45-day period in which, once we submit a name, council has to take action.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 117, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Nay.
Resolution 117, 2019 does not pass, the confirmation's been rejected. Thank you, John.
Mr. McCain.
Yes.
I'd like to introduce a motion, if you may, to introduce an extension of 60 days. And for Mr. Wilber's, if he's willing, his contract for 60 more days while this plays out, so we can have some continuity in the, in the county. You heard Mr. Young state, you know, we have 400 cases, contracts, other things that are in process. You know, we all know how crucial it is in the day-to-day activities. So I'd like to make a motion for a 60-day extension to Mr. Wilber's contract.
Would be nice, Councilman McCain, to have had this earlier so that we might have been able to prepare for this. Mr. Taylor, what's, what would the circumstances be in reference to this?
We just, we just voted, Mr. Gannon.
We just voted on a prior resolution.
I think technically you'd probably be amending the resolution that you passed in, what was it, May, to terminate, and that had in August, pardon me, July 31st.
What I'm, what I'm concerned about, Mr. Taylor, is.
Period, that would be extended.
Is the way that the motion has been presented, it's sort of not in any fashion of a resolution or anything. I'm curious as to how we can just arbitrarily make a motion to extend something for 45 days, and we don't have any of the, the council hasn't had the opportunity for any of the backup information.
Right, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I think the, the technical aspect of it would be to either amend the resolution that you passed earlier with the, with that deadline.
Right.
And extend that deadline. In fact, I think that's probably what you'd want to do.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me? There's a motion, a second, further discussion. We would really seriously need to know what this motion is.
Right, we did, and just to clarify. I'm just trying to clarify, based on, you know, Mr. Taylor's advice, that we extend the, or amend the deadline from the earlier motion, I wish I knew the date. I mean, Ms. Hurley, if you could help us with that.
The date was May the 21st. I don't have the resolution number in front of me, though.
Right, from May 21st, to extend that date 60 days beyond the deadline.
Now, now, what I don't know, and I'm kind of looking at Laura on this, is what public notice is needed for that.
Good point.
I don't know that any's needed, but I, I wouldn't bet the farm on that.
I'm not aware of any public notice that would be needed.
Yeah.
Since there seems to be a lot of confusion, I think it'd be best to table this.
There is a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to table.
What do we table, Bill's motion, or his amendment?
Yes, motion, motion and a second to table. No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye opposed?
Opposed.
What do we have? Bill?
I oppose.
Oppose. Oppose.
From aye to table.
Josh?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Aye. Okay, there's a motion, a motion has been opposed, so the table does not pass. I think we're in a bit of a predicament here because we don't have anything on the table that substantiates.
Makes sense.
The motion and the second. We have nothing, no documentation that can substantiate this motion. And this extension, we don't have the resolution in hand.
No, I mean, I'll totally disagree. We have records, and Ms. Hurley's here looking that up, and we know it's the May resolution, we're just simply extending it 60 days, that's the motion.
Well, isn't, doesn't the county council, a county executive have the authority to appoint somebody for 90 days?
That's right, yes.
If they want to, an acting, yeah.
Yes.
Let, if he wants, whatever he wants to do.
They can appoint somebody tomorrow for 90 days as acting.
That's what I said, it fell under the charter for the executive.
And that would be the same as what you're trying to do, but he could appoint anybody he wanted to.
I think the.
So I think that's, I think that would be the way to go, if he wants to do that.
For, for want of clarity, I think, I think the main concern of what the council's currently thinking is that we have a lot of issues at hand that we need to address, and we don't want to go beyond a certain period of time where we're, where the administration doesn't, or others don't have the ability to handle all that's coming at them, but it seems to be that there's also, so there's a 90-day.
Well, we've already gone past the 90, we've already gone past the deadline. I mean, we have already, you're asking to extend the deadline, but we have already passed that deadline, and we have already fired Mr. Wilber. We would have to make a vote to rehire him, and I just don't see how we can recognize this.
I think, Mr. I think you wanted to comment, Mr. Young.
I think we can leave this with, it would have been nice, again, to have had this a week ago, if we knew this is where we were going to go. Mr. Taylor, I do need clarification on the validity of the motion.
I don't understand that, we just voted. We didn't, we didn't know until we just voted that we're not appointing him.
I understand, Bill, but I can't help but think there's no anticipation.
You can't have an amendment for something you didn't even know existed.
Mr. Taylor, I would need some clarification on that.
Well, I, as I said earlier, I think you can amend the motion from May, and you'd amend it by extending that deadline. I think the fact that it has passed, I don't think is, would affect that.
You're saying that the motion to, to fire Mr. Wilber doesn't supersede that?
No, the, the, it was a resolution to terminate him, and it had a next deadline on it for his services, and that deadline was July 31st. And I think what Mr. McCain is suggesting is, and technically speaking, is that that date should be extended by, I think, 60 days instead.
Sixty days.
And I think that can be done. The fact that you don't have anything in writing right now, I don't think precludes that from being done. And as long as there's no public notice requirement, advance notice, and I don't think that there is, and I'll kind of defer somewhat to Ms. Hurley on this, and I think she thinks that there's none required either, that that could be done now.
So, well, we're just sitting here in 60 days doing the same thing over again?
Which we will be anyhow.
I personally feel, Mr. Taylor, and again, I'm just trying to get a feel for this, if you have fired an employee and you want to rehire this employee, that rehiring process has to go through the executive branch, the firing has been done. To bring that employee back, it would have to be by charter, recommended by the executive and approved by the council, unless it's an acting position for 90 days.
I, I think the only, the only technical wrinkle here is the fact that the July 31st date has come and gone. I don't think that that precludes extending that deadline, because it would be part of the original, would become part of the resolution.
We're not extending the deadline, Mr. Taylor, we are rehiring a county attorney, because the county attorney's been fired.
Yeah, there's different, there's different ways to look at it, but I think under the resolution, that that deadline could be extended.
Now, the county attorney's been fired, we don't have a county attorney, that's clear. Okay. What is the process, let me finish real quick. What is the process for hiring a county attorney, which is what we would be doing?
If we're hiring from scratch, then you have to go through the appointment and confirmation process.
Well, this resolution we just saw was a resolution to hire Mr. Wilber as a county attorney. It was voted down.
I, I understand that, but I think that the prior resolution could be amended to extend that deadline.
Question. Being that we turned the resolution down, tomorrow, do we have a county attorney?
We haven't had a county attorney since August 1st.
So we operate without a county attorney? So tomorrow, if county executive Bob Culver appoints Paul Wilber acting attorney, do that take effect tomorrow, or do we have to vote on it?
We don't have to vote on an acting attorney.
Yeah.
He can, he can appoint anybody he wants for an acting attorney for 90 days. That's why we don't need to do what Bill's suggesting.
If he does that tomorrow.
Well, we can do the amendment for 90 days, for that matter.
Yeah.
You just make the amendment for 90 days. So I think the question is, or do we make it for 60 days or 90 days?
I understand where you're coming from, but it doesn't require any action from us, really.
So, Mr. McCain, you're suggesting pushing back his termination date, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Just, instead of him being terminated on the 31st, he would be terminated.
There'd be a 90-day extension to that, and within that window, the executive needs to bring us a recommendation.
Okay. Because interviewing attorneys is a timely.
Correct.
It's a time-consuming.
It may not take 90 days.
Yeah.
You know, that's why I mentioned 60, but we could do 90.
It's taking longer than this time.
Right, but, but now.
90 days before the RFP went out.
But given, but given the fact that we just.
Why, why is there such urgency now?
Given the fact we just voted down the previous resolution, we're going to be back here regardless, you know, because we don't, now we don't have, we don't have a county attorney, so we have to have another one presented.
Well, in all honesty, if maybe, if maybe the attorney who we did not fire was presented to the council, we might have had a more positive outcome tonight. In two weeks, we can do the same exact thing. I mean, this process has been, what you're asking us to do is make up for the, I think, the, the issues that have been created on, from the administration. They knew in November that this was coming. The RFP was, took a month before the RFP got out. And after the, after the RFP, after the bids were closed, it was another three weeks before this came up.
If, if I might speak, we didn't know in, in November, John, the council didn't take a vote until May 21st. So I think it's inaccurate to say that the administration knew what action the county council was going to take. I think that's.
Mr. Strausberg, the, the executive branch was very much aware of the circumstances. Mr. Wilber was very much aware of the circumstances. I don't want to get, I would rather not get into the semantics of that.
Council didn't take any formal action until May 21st. When we transitioned, by the way, when we transitioned from Mr. Baker or the in-house construct, that, that was a six-month transition. You, you don't, you don't, you don't transition the amount of work in the county attorney's office in a matter of weeks. We went out, had an RFP, we had three submittals. So we, we, we put forward the submittal that was the most cost-effective, and a firm, and a firm that has done an excellent job for the county over the past four years. We feel that that's responsible. Council certainly can say no, but I think, I think to infer that we have known that this was going to happen, we didn't know what was going to happen until council took a vote.
Why, Mr. Strausberg, did you wait 30 days before putting out an RFP after the council voted?
Because it took that amount of time to put it together, John.
For an RFP, for an attorney?
It took that amount of time to put it together.
Can't see that, 30 days? I don't see it immediately.
I mean, I can, I can have Mr.
Hiring legal counsel, it can be a very time-consuming process.
It was an RFP, it wasn't a hiring, it was an RFP.
It was an RFP, but putting an RFP out for something as complicated as the county attorney's position is, is complex. It does take time, and it isn't the only RFP, it's not the only purchasing endeavor that we have on our plate. And to answer whosoever questioned, was it your question, Ernie? No, we haven't had an attorney for a week, and I can't tell you how much difficulty that's causing. We can't move any contract forward. We can't move contracts forward that were already at Mr. Wilber's firm. There are 400, over 400 documents over there that have to be thoroughly vetted, approved, charter requires that by the county attorney. I can't do it, I don't have the authority to do it, I'm not an attorney. Even if I were an attorney, the charter requires that any contract has to be approved by the county attorney. So we are actually at a standstill right now.
Wayne, you, you had the option of hiring a acting county attorney, and you knew this was going to happen, and your option there was to hire an acting county attorney for 90 days. When this vote was taken, why weren't you planning for that?
I'm not saying that we weren't planning for that, Joe, but, but, but we went through, look, we, we went through an RFP process, and we have an obligation, having gone through that RFP process, we have an obligation to score that RFP, which we did, and having scored it, we have an obligation to bring it forward. If we don't bring it forward, we have exposed the county to legal recourse. We can't put an RFP, score it, and then not put it forward without good cause.
But that's, that wasn't my question. My question was, you've had the option of appointing an acting attorney for 90 days, but you're saying that we don't have an attorney, and we've been without an attorney, and so everything's held up, but you do have the option of appointing an acting attorney, how come you haven't done that?
Well, I'm not saying that we won't do that tomorrow morning. I'm saying that we, we don't feel that it, that would have been appropriate until we bought the results of the RFP forward to council, for council to review, take a vote. You've taken the vote. We, we certainly can't continue without an attorney, because that brings the county to a standstill.
That should settle, you know, what our discussion should be up here with Bill. I mean, they said they could appoint an acting attorney tomorrow, so I don't see any need of us taking any further action, really.
Well, the.
They can do that.
The motions, I mean, I made the motion, and the motion was seconded, and the.
I, I need, I need a clarification on what that motion is and what resolution we're talking about amending.
And I'll.
Ernie, you don't, you don't want to, you don't want what resolution we're amending?
Well, he's explained it to you twice, John.
What?
Mr. Taylor's explained it to you twice, how many more times does he have to?
How can elected body amend a resolution? We don't even know what the resolution is.
He explained it to you, you're not, you're talking to me. He just explained it.
I do have a resolution number.
That's really all I'm looking for here.
It's 86, 2019.
86, 2019.
I guess the question here is, Mr. McCain, do you want to move forward with the resolution? You can always, you can always withdraw your motion with the understanding that the executive branch can take the same initiative by appointing a county attorney tomorrow for 90 days.
Yeah, my preference is I'll, I'll amend the motion to read to extend the Resolution 86, 2019 that was on 5/21, and to be consistent with the timeframe, to extend that 90 days.
There's an amendment to the motion to amend Resolution 86, 2019. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I just have questions, McCain.
I need a second on the motion.
I'll second it.
Second.
Okay, a second on the motion, discussion.
You can ask a question.
So with the extension of, with his extension of his termination date, will, I'm sorry, the extension of his termination date, could the, could one of the county council members be present in the evaluation process of the attorney? in the evaluation process of the attorney?
I'll clarify that. They had actually asked me to be one of the evaluators on that. And I felt as though there was a conflict of interest. So I declined their request.
Yeah, with the executive legislative form of government, they have the executive that's involved in a hiring process. I think that it's good to separate those two bodies, because then the council has to approve it. And I don't think it would be fair to have one council person sitting in on the selection process as opposed to, you know, all seven. So what we do is try to keep a separation of powers there. The executive branch makes that decision, and then the council either approves that or refuses it or jacks it. So anyway, we are still in discussion on the amending to 90 days. Again, Council McCain, what keeps the executive from just making his appointment tomorrow?
It could. I like... I really feel we discussed it quite a bit. I like to call it a motion to question.
I have a motion to call the question, a second.
A second, may I have some?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'll let it go, because I'm not so worried about the discussion. We have an amended Resolution 86-2019 that has been amended to 90 days. I'm going to accept it as a friendly amendment. I don't think we have to take a separate vote for that. Any further discussion on the motion to amend Resolution 86-2019?
I have one question.
Yes.
And this is for Mr. Taylor, actually. That resolution required a supermajority vote. Does it require a supermajority in order to amend?
That's a good question. My guess would be yes. And it's just a guess, honestly, because, you know, I'm speaking totally cold here.
My only comment I'd make on that is it's two different things. It's amending the date. It's extending a date. It's not appointing anybody. That was to terminate. But this is an amendment to really, you know, extend the date for continuity purposes as a grace here, not as a, you know, not the terminator county attorney. Because that's already been done.
This was the resolution, nothing in reference to the...
And I would say that's at least a plausible argument. I mean, I don't know whether it's correct or not, because as I say, I'm talking cold here, but I can understand the logic behind it.
So the original Resolution 86-2019 required a supermajority?
When it was passed, yes, to terminate the county attorney.
So in order to amend...
Well, you're not really changing that part of it. As Mr. McCain points out under his analysis, and as I say, it's at least certainly plausible, is what you're doing is extending that termination date. You're still... The termination part stands.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
It's just the effective date of it.
We could make a motion to amend this resolution, and then we're going to make a motion to approve the resolution as amended, which is a supermajority. It may not take a supermajority to amend that resolution, but it's going to take a supermajority to pass that resolution as amended.
We're speaking cold here. I mean, we've not looked at it. This is a very unusual situation. But I understand Mr. McCain's analysis that the termination date part of it is different from the act of termination itself. And I believe that that would be at least a plausible argument. Now, how a court would rule, I'll take a coin and flip it, give you an answer.
And here we go, trying to make a decision on something we don't know is accurate.
That's true. I mean, I can't... Yeah, I can't give you...
Table the motion again.
Total confidence on that. But it's certainly plausible.
Can I table the motion again?
No.
Motion tabled.
The table was already rejected there. I think, I know this helps, Mr. McCain. I just think we need to do our vote, and then the issue...
Well, you already called for the question. I understand that.
But the issue of majority versus supermajority is going to have to be determined outside of our vote.
Well, if we take... What we're going to have to do, I don't... This thing should be tabled. I don't care what anybody says. This is ridiculous.
I agree. You vote on something you don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we're sitting here flying by the seat of our pants, and we're possibly passing legislation that doesn't even, isn't even legitimate. Once, if this were to pass, then we're going to have to come to the table. What are the measures that are going to have to be in place to undo it if we find out that this has been done incorrectly?
Well, if it's been done incorrectly, it just is nugget, doesn't have any effect. If you need a supermajority and you don't get it, then it has no effect.
So we're going to call. We're going to call Mr. Wilbur tomorrow, tell him that everything's on board. And then we're going to call him the next day and tell him, sorry, but it's all... It's not going to happen.
Well, I mean, sometimes things happen like that. I mean, as I say, this came up totally cold, and I don't know...
It's just not the way to do legislation.
I think it's...
They can appoint him too, if they want to. I mean, as I said, the call to question has already been made, so...
I think a very important point came up with the... Yes, Mr. Strausberg? Yes, you may.
I appreciate all this, I really do. But the... And I understand the quandary that you're in right now with this question. And we need certainty. You know, I and Weston, the executive branch, need certainty. And if council is going to take a vote that they're not sure is a legitimate vote, I would prefer to simply go back to the executive and suggest that he appoint an acting attorney in the morning.
I agree.
It's... Excuse me?
Thank you.
No, I mean, we need certainty. We need to get on with the work. And I would prefer to go that route.
Thank you, Mr. Strausberg. Any other comments?
In brief, first of all, I don't know if there's, in the future, if there's ways that we can... Generally, my belief when it comes to a lot of these things, the executive branch should have, should handle issues... I guess this comes with us splitting between, but now having an executive form of government, it'd be easier if there were less oversight. It'd be easier if issues like this didn't come to the county council. And it'd be easier if they can handle their own business, and we could have our own attorney on our side. But since we're not in that situation at this point, and maybe that's completely off, but I guess in general, it doesn't... None of this feels like it's working well. And I don't know that we feel like we have even a strong understanding of what's... I'll leave it at that. I wish I had better clarity, but I...
Well, we're going to have to have better clarity as far as guidelines, because, you know, in eight-plus years, I've never had something come to the table the day of. We're going to have to review processes more carefully, Mrs. Hurley. And we're going to have to come up with stricter guidelines on what comes to the table and what doesn't come to the table, so that the council is prepared, at a time, for any business that has to come here today. I probably shouldn't have recognized the motion since I set the agenda, but I didn't want to do that.
You've never had an amendment to a motion, John?
Not like this. Not out of the clear blue. Come on, Bill, you know that hasn't happened before.
Well, obviously, it happened many a times.
It hasn't happened before.
I have no idea what you're talking about there.
No. I've had amendments come to the table. I've never had something be brought to the table off the agenda. All right, so we're at the section now where we need to vote on, I'm assuming, Resolution 86-2019 as amended.
Wait. If Wayne has said you're going to hire a... Said you're going to appoint an acting tomorrow, I guess we could just...
He's going to suggest.
I guess I think the thing to do is ask Bill to withdraw his... Could you withdraw your... To save a lot of confusion, could you withdraw your motion?
No.
No?
No. I appreciate your asking that, but no.
Pardon me?
I appreciate your asking, but no.
All right, so all those in favor of the resolution to amend Resolution 86-2019, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. We have one aye, we have three opposed, so the motion to amend does not pass. Roll call, Josh.
And to be clear, this is a motion to amend...
Extend the date.
To extend the date.
Yes.
90 days.
Yeah.
Do you want to put the date on there in your motion, as the date that you're setting?
It was 90 days from the original, so it'd be 90 days from the 31st of July.
So it'd be October 31st?
In that range, yeah. Councilman Ackley?
Excuse me, as a newbie here...
Anybody, you may vote yes, no, you may abstain.
Okay, so if I abstain, then...
You can abstain.
Then the county executive can hire an attorney tomorrow.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I would like to abstain. I just, I don't, I don't feel like I have enough information.
Vice President Dodd?
Nay.
Councilman McCain?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Hallway?
No.
The sheriff votes no. It's a 3-3 tie, so the resolution fails. Thank you, Councilman McCain. Where were we? At this time, we have a letter to the director of the management board, correct, Mrs. Hurley?
That is correct. In the brief book, it was just recently added, it's a letter from Michelle Bradley, the director of the local management board, actually asking for council not to delay in the hiring of a county attorney. We have prepared a response letter that is in the brief book as well, and we're just seeking your approval to send that letter to Michelle Bradley.
Everyone's had a chance to read that letter. Does the council approve to send this letter? Any discussion?
Why is this on...
Well, what we're finding out with the new regulations is that, you know, you can't just ask someone through emails and things like that. And so we wanted to get council approval before this letter went out. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to make one suggestion. We're getting some other letters, too, from some of the local lower eastern shore delegation.
We did, yes.
And I think it would be a good idea to carbon copy this letter to the ones that's responded.
Okay.
If that's okay with the council.
Yes, I think it's great.
John, I don't know how you want to handle that.
That's good, thank you.
At this time, we have a floor for public comments. If you'd have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, state your name, county residence, and your concerns. Good evening.
Well, now, good evening. Been very interesting. Democracy in its finest. First of all, my name's Katrina Purnell. I am a resident of Wycomico County. And I am just overwhelmed. My first reason for coming here, to see a woman on the board. Amen.
Thank you.
To bring a different perspective, a new, fresh, different idea, a calmness when it's needed. Thank you so much. Now, the second reason why I came, I usually just holler at you guys on PAC 14, but sometimes I have to come out and make it verbal. I was glad to hear the swearing-in part of it, because it made me think of something. In the Declaration of Independence, it says, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal, that they are endowed by the Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And for the governing body to make sure that that works. To my point, I've been here before for the landfill. I've come for when it was older people and Wycomico County, Wycomico Elder Care Center. But now you've really stung me. You've attacked my children. We have Billy Jack Park. We have Lake Street Playground. We have Holloway Playground that's on Booth Street and Route 50. And we had the Indian Village Playground. Four facilities that were not used this summer for our children. I called, I didn't give my name, because I didn't want it to be any way, and asked why. And I was told that if they wanted recreation, they had to come on the east side of town. That kind of perturbed me. Because I remember, not you, so please don't tell me you weren't on the county council, because every time I asked a question, when you all say that, it makes me want to make a left turn, so don't say it. The position of the county council made a promise to the people on the west side, because one of our parishioners' grandson, along with his friends, tried to cross Route 50 and Lake Street and was hit by a car, because all recreation was on the east side of town, and he spent over seven months in a hospital. That there would be recreation provided for all of our children, that inalienable right thing, which we don't have. That we don't have facilities... We have a facility, but we do not have it manned so that our children can have recreation during the summer while they're out of school, so that purple thing might be decreased if you have children that have something to do, and they can be directed during the day. And that probably would be more cost-effective to get them while they're young than trying to attack the problem once they get older. My concern is that, as citizens on the west side, we have done everything we possibly could to show that we want to be citizens of Wycomico County. The building that's at Billy Jack Park, Recreation and Park, did not build that. We, the community, built that Recreation and Park. And now to use it, we have to pay. How do I know? Because I don't hammer and nail, but I brought dinner. I carried shingles. I helped Shirley DeShields and some of the other ladies. We carried lumber. Billy Jackson, Mr. Kane, Jesse Ballard, Mr. McGriff, a lot of other people in our community built that center. And we build things in all of the locations where we had children. And all we asked is we get equal access under the law to provide for our children as you do on this side of the river. And it's not happening. Going forward, the summer is over, they're going back to school. So I would ask, when you all get to your budget process in June, that you think about Katrina Purnell standing here wanting to know why our children can't get the same recreation that everybody else gets in the county that we're entitled to as being citizens of the United States. Thank you.
Thanks, Katrina. Any other public comments? Seeing none, council comments. Do you have a public comment? Did you have a comment? Okay.
I have children, my children are grown. Now I have grandchildren. And my grandchildren live on the west side of town, where Indian Village is. By them not having anywhere to go, I can honestly say that I saw my grandchildren do this most of the summer, because they had nowhere to go. And just like they said, they took the playground away. We had it last year, but the playground used to be where the kids could have freedom to come and go as they pleased. Then, obviously, the Recreation of Parks got involved, had to have contracts. They wanted to tell the kids when they could come, when they had to go home. They told the kids when they could have trips. My grandchildren could not even go on a trip. Why? Because they said they didn't have the monies for a bus to take them on a trip. And even if I took them there, they would have to pay because they weren't on the bus, which is, to me, is not fair. So now I have to use my time, my gas, to take them there, and then pay whatever the fee is for, say, like, for example, bowling. We have kids that they have nowhere to go. Now we have kids that stay at home without parental guidance, because there's nobody at the park to supervise them. Also, they wouldn't even feed the kids, because now they have it where, oh, well, the school has taken over. And the school needs a number as to how many kids they can feed. So now you have children that are home once again that can't, don't have anything to eat, because there's a certain number now that they have to have in order to feed these children. And then you have all these rules that they have put in place where we have young people that are now running the parks. And when the kids are at the park, they don't have the freedom to play the games that they want to play. So if they don't play baseball, oh, well, then they can't really be here, because they should be playing baseball. I feel that our children should have the choice as to whether they want to play baseball. If they don't want to play baseball, let them play on the swings. How are you going to tell our kids what to do and not to do at the park? I understand the safety. Or now, they're telling our kids when they can come and when they can't come. Not every parent can take their kid to the park at nine o'clock. So if they can't get there by nine o'clock, now they get penalized. There's no point given to them. You weren't here by nine o'clock, so you don't get points to go on the field trip. Or if you didn't come the day before, now you can't go on the field trip. So they said, "Well, why are numbers going down?" The numbers are going down because now we have all these rules, all these regulations, when they can come, when they can't come, who we can feed, who we can't feed, who gets to go on the field trip, who can't go on the field trip. I feel that our children should be able to come to the park when they want to, leave the park when they want to. If you want them to write up a contract, or the parents, and say, "My child can go when they want and come and, and go home when they want", that's what I think should be done. I mean, when you get the Recreation and Parks taking over, now everything, and now all of a sudden, everything is, "Oh, it's got to be legalized. Oh, it's for the safety of this, the safety of that." I was raised on, I was raised there. I can't even recount how many kids got killed or really got hurt because they were at the playground. But now that you have all these people involved, and you have people that are at the playground that don't even understand our children on the west side, they have games our kids don't even like to play. So now you're going to tell them what kind of games they can play. And now you've taken away, not only that, they've taken away a lot of the, um, things that, the equipments that they used to have there that is no longer there, things they used to like to play, the tether bar, ball, the, um, hockey games. All that is gone because it's being replaced by what you think our children like to play. So, once again, just like she said, now our children have to go way on the other side. What transportation do they have? We have a park right there on the west side. We have a park, I'm just mostly speaking for the west side because that's where I live, but again, like they said, the other parks that are not even being used now. So where are our children supposed to go? Now they're left without a place to play for health reasons and no food. Because now all of a sudden, they have the school involved, and we have all these rules. Now we've got Recreation, the Civic Center involved, we have all these rules. Let our children play. Let them have a choice as to what they want to play and when they want to come to the park and play. That's what I got to say as a grandparent.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Robin Wright. I'm a very proud resident of the west side. And I only come before you with a few statistics as to how important summer programs are on the west side of town. According to, um, the Urban Wire Educational and Training Studies, the lack of high-quality, engaging summer programming means youth may not have a safe place to go while their parents are at work. Even those engaged in daytime activities may not be receiving the quality educational or recreational programming necessary to keep them healthy and to avoid the summer slide. John Hopkins National Summer Learning Association reports that on an average, youth from low-income families lose two months of learning or 22% of the school year during the summertime break. And those losses are, are cumulative, and it means that low-income children are less likely to graduate. Summer programs are very important to the development of all children, especially those that come from low socioeconomic neighborhoods. Now, we will go with another study from the Washington Post dated September the 7th, 2016. Research suggests that school districts can staff off the so-called summer slide by offering free voluntary programs that mix reading and math instructions with arts and crafts and other summer staples. There is a foundation called the Wallace Foundation that has a $50 million national summer learning project that can help with this. We need to ensure that these programs on the west side, the four playgrounds that are there are used to help our children. Yes, there are children who are food deficient. Yes, there are children who have no type of guidance at home. If we offer summer programs that helps them with math and reading, we all know that the highest rating of dropouts are among black, African-American students. And the only way that we can try to save that is if we offer some type of programming for children, let's say, beginning in the third grade, maybe even younger, but we want to catch them right before they go to middle school where the peer pressure becomes very, very dominant. We all know, we all did not grow up as adults as we are. Some of us went through peer pressure, some of us did not. But children that are from low socioeconomic neighborhoods do. Some have no fathers, some have no mothers. The heroin epidemic is affecting our neighborhood just like it's affecting yours, but it affects our children the most. So now we need to have some type of programs. There is funding there to help these children in these programs. When a mother leaves a child to go to work, let's say below the age of 13, and someone calls the police and says, "Oh, well, Johnny is keeping two children aged six and seven, and she's only 12." The first thing you want to do is charge the parent. Well, if there was a summer day camp program, then that child and those children could go somewhere where someone would be there to guide them, to help them, and that is the purpose, and that is the reason why there should be some type of funding for this program, volunteers that are willing to volunteer, that are specialized maybe in education, reading, and math, where we lack, especially in sciences. So if you would be so kind as to think about it and, uh, try to have some funding for our children on the west side of town, so that when we all come to meet, we can just be one whole community. Thank you.
Robin?
Yes, sir!
I, I didn't get, I, you yelled at me. I, I didn't get your last name, I'm sorry.
Wright.
Wright.
Oh, well, thank you, Ernie.
Great. Um, what you may want to do, um, if you would want to share that information with Mrs. Hurley, uh, we could certainly pass that on to Recreation and Parks.
Oh, sure. I do apologize. I did not know that I needed to make 10 copies.
Oh, you don't, no, you don't need to make 10 copies.
Okay.
But, I mean, you don't have to do it tonight, but you can do it anytime and whenever it suits you.
Oh, sure.
But we can make the copies of your presentation. You can go home and you can rework it if you want.
Okay.
But if you would, contact the officers to do that, we'll make sure that Recreation Parks Commission gets, uh, gets, um, gets that.
Sure.
So they can maybe help address it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Oh, can I say one more thing?
Excuse me?
Summer day camp programs are great. That young lady sitting there on the very end, she was a member of the one over in Indian Village because I lived down the street from Lake Street Playground. They didn't have one, so I had to carry her all the way over there. She is a thousand-point scorer. Only in the 10th grade, she scored a thousand points. She's now in 11th grade, she's about to get her 1,000th rebound. Saturday, she's going to be inducted into the National High School, uh, for academics. So if you need to know of anyone that has gone to a summer program and has become successful, her name is Jacqueline Wright, and she's done a good job. Thank you again.
Thank you, Gary Lacy. You can't be embarrassed because I'm sure your mother talks about you all the time.
And I'm sorry that I didn't investigate this before tonight, but I was wondering if someone could investigate this. Um, they, um, from what I've heard, um, is that the monies that they had to really help with, um, the west side to building facilities and all, a lot of that money went to the skate park. So I would like to see if someone would, I just wanted to see if someone would investigate that and see what title those monies are that may have gone to the skate, skate park.
That's not true. That skate park is the city. The county is not doing, that's not the county skate park.
Can anyone let us know then what happens? Because I've heard there were monies there. What happened to the monies that?
For what?
For the rebuilding of the, um, the parks and all on the west side of town.
They're getting new equipment now. Most of them has got new equipment. Matter of fact, their park down on Rocker Walkin' Ridge Road, they're redoing a basketball court right now.
Is that the reason why we didn't have anyone at the park this year?
I don't know why that is. We don't, we don't handle the day-to-day operations, but as far as the money for the equipment, the, the parks are getting the equipment.
What we can do?
Cars are getting the new equipment now.
What we can do, I mean, um, if each of you would leave your information on Mrs. Hurley, then we could certainly have, uh, Recreation and Parks contact you and, and they'd be glad to answer all your questions for you.
Okay, because we definitely wanted to check into, like I said, the transportation of buses, why, um, the children, not all children, can participate in that as far as field trips and all, those that go to the.
Maybe they can help clarify a lot of it for you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hello, everyone. I'm Molly Hiligoss. I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County. And I wanted to bring to your attention something that I don't think, um, you may be aware of. Um, the Department of Housing and Community Development released its, um, fiscal year Public Housing Authority Report, and Wycomico County ranks number two, and this is not good. Wycomico County ranks number two with the highest number of families that have applied and are waiting for Section 8 housing. 550 families are on the waiting list. That waiting list has been closed for over 30 months. So we don't even know how many families truly need affordable housing. So I, I want to ask you, um, and I want to commend, um, Councilwoman Nicole Ackley for talking about using her voice, and it gave me the courage to come up here and bring this to your attention. You have the voice. You have the ability to call your, our congressmen, our senators, and get more money from HUD to help people that need affordable housing. Habitat for Humanity cannot do it alone. I can't do it alone. I need you and your voices and your emails. I need everyone that's watching this. This is the perfect month. The council, the, um, congressmen and the senators, they're on break. Hopefully, they're watching me talk. This is absolutely unacceptable that so many people are waiting for affordable housing. And in Wycomico County, people are spending more than half of their paycheck on housing. That is not acceptable. We can do better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, council comments.
I got a couple. Um, first of all, I want to welcome Ms. Ackley to the county council. Uh, thank you very much, and, uh, we're all happy to have you. And, um, also tonight, you know, as you heard several people mention earlier, uh, you know, it's one of the nights out on, uh, here in town. On the way here, I was going by the city park, and it's packed. And it's great. I mean, you, I saw the people crossing the road and, you know, people with their families, and, uh, that's just what a community is all about. So, uh, it's great to see that, and, uh, thank you all for your comments. Uh, Molly, thank you for your comments, and, uh, just one comment too regarding Molly and Habitat for Humanity. What they do for our community with the limited funds and so forth is just amazing. You all are rock stars, and it's just great having you all in our community. So thank you for, for what you all do.
Thank you. Uh, Ernie?
Um, a couple comments. Um, as far as the parks, um, we've been rebuilding the parks on the west side for the past two years. I mean, Indian Village has got new equipment, new fencing. Billie Jean Jackson Park got a new basketball court, new equipment. Lake Street is kind of, because it's like a, it's like kind of run with the city, it's, with that. Um, like I said, um, the park on River, um, Rocker Walkin' Ridge Road, they're doing, redoing the basketball court. As far as some of those programs you're talking about, we as a council, we don't control the day-to-day operation of the county. That's something that Parks and Recs has been doing for years, even when I was small. It's always been under their control.
What?
I mean, you were small.
Um, but, you know, that's something we can look, I can look into, we can look into together. Um, now with the housing, I understand what you're talking about, but I think a lot of the problem in Wycomico County is that there's not a lot of realtors or people that rent that wants to deal with Section 8, and I think that's the biggest problem. They don't have the people that wants to, to do the paperwork along with the Section 8. I mean, the people, I mean, the people got the vouchers and stuff for it, but there's not a lot of renters, people that are out there that are dealing with Section 8, and I think that's the biggest problem we got here with that.
Any other council comments?
Joe?
Yeah, um, I'd like to welcome Ms. Ackley, Mrs. Ackley to the council.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, that's, um, not all I have tonight. Thank you. I have some other things I can add.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I do want to, um, welcome her again. We've welcomed her many times, so I think she feels welcome. The county just got done doing, um, three weeks of softball, and it's brought a lot of, um, money to this county. A lot of businesses took advantage of that, so I want to commend Parks and Recs for putting that on. We have some nice fields out there, and I took the opportunity to go to some of the games, and it was great. Um, also Thursday night for the Little League, the 11, 12-year-old majors, they went on to, uh, the regions. I don't think they won tonight, though. They lost Sunday, and then I think they lost tonight, according to some of the information I got, but they played well. They are state champs, and they're good. We'll probably have them here at one of the upcoming meetings. Um, there are other, I think Delmar and West may have a couple teams in girls softball. Little League softball is doing well. Um, we have coming up, I think it's two weeks from now, we have, um, Winter Place Park, we have the county fair. So that'd be a big event for the county if you're looking for something to do. It's going to be hot this week too, so stay cool. Thank you, everybody, for all your comments.
Any other comments?
Um, I just had a few comments on the summer activities. The Wycomico County Board of Education receives funding for STEM programs, math reading intervention during the summer. Um, so that may be something you want to address there. Um, there is quite a bit of funding that is put out for that. Wycomico County Education System also participates in the school feeding program. And as a registered dietitian and a member of Team Nutrition, I can tell you that no child, regardless of their call head count, can be denied a meal. That is a fed, that those are federal laws.
But that's not the case because I've been to the park, and they said if they are not on that list, if they're not part of that program.
Well, I would suggest if you'd like to engage in that discussion after the meeting, feel free. Um, it's quite open. Did you lose your train of thought?
Any more, I'll go next.
Uh, Nicole, I, I, I know you're a new councilmember. I apologize. I was simply trying to, uh, limit the exchange with the audience. But no, I wasn't asking you to, to conclude your remarks. You can certainly, you know, finish with any remarks that you have.
Okay.
Okay?
And I lost my train of thought, so.
We can come back to you. We can do that too. Go ahead, Josh.
Uh, well, I got to jump on this, uh, uh, welcoming, um, bandwagon, so welcome Councilwoman Nicole Ackley.
Thank you.
Uh, real quick, I just want to say, I did hear out of tonight, $18,000 lost for every person that's not counted in the census. So we've got to really make sure that that's a, uh, we really have to, to really organize around, uh, getting everyone counted in our census. The other thing I want to say was, oh, I think most everyone else has already said it, but, um, you know, democracy also is, is never a clear path, and we want to try to get things right, even if it doesn't look like that sometimes. But, uh, all right, I guarantee if anyone's watching, we do, I want to reassure you, we do take a lot of time to try to think through and get things right, and that's, uh, doesn't always come across, but, um, last thing I'll say, Jackie Fritz, uh, passed away recently. She's a, uh... She's a, uh, I think many folks in the community knew her, but she was a, she's a long time, she was the head of the PALS, the Peace Alliance of the Lower Shore. I was a PAL member ten years ago and actually got to work with her and others to help create Peace in the Park, which is, um, I think it's now a decade or so going, but, uh, that's, the International Day of Peace is September twenty-first. I had Jackie in mind when I decided that that was the day I was going to get married. And, uh, so September twenty-first is going to be the day that, um, that I'll be married. But, um, it was really sad to see that she passed. So her celebration of life is at the Unitarian Universalist, um, location on the Saturday from three to five. But just a wonderful community servant and a wonderful person, um, we all interacted with.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Josh. Nicole, did you want to wrap it in? Feel good?
I'm done.
Okay. I'm taking a motion to adjourn if I could so we can go into open work session followed by, um, an open work session of the Urban Services Commission as well. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh, uh.
No, means adjourn. Legislative session's adjourned. First open, uh, work session item is the, uh, template resolution for hiring outside legal counsel. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, um, we've, this has been before council before, a couple of months ago. Um, and it's back. Um, we've received some comments from the executive branch from Mr. Wilber. I've addressed what I think is the most significant one, uh, in an email to council. Um, he apparently thinks that the council should not be able to terminate, um, special legal counsel, essentially what we call outside counsel. We're not talking about the county attorney now. We're talking about special legal counsel who have been retained, um, to perform services that the county law department, essentially the county attorney and his firm, um, are unable to perform for various reasons. And, uh, at least in far, as far as termination is concerned, I think the county council has the power to do that. Um, and I think that, um, since the county council can terminate the county attorney, uh, as we've been discussing earlier tonight, um, it's logically follows that you, you can terminate special legal counsel. That's, I think, the main objection. There are a few others in their comments.
Could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
This is just a, I guess, a hypothetical question, but the, uh, I understand what you're saying, but a lot of the things, like if special counsel's hired, whatever it may be for, uh, we may not be aware of the, you know, if it's an HR issue or something that we're not privy to. There could be a lot of things that we're not, we're not privy to the whole issue that, that's going on. So us terminating, uh, an outside counsel that we're not even working with or not even part of, you know, being us being the legislative branch, there could be a lot of things that we wouldn't be a part of.
Well, that's true, but I don't think it's something you do willy-nilly. And I don't, and I don't think that it's necessarily that you don't know what they're doing. I mean, I think you would essentially want to know what your outside counsel is doing.
If it doesn't have anything to do with a legislative issue, I mean, there's a lot of things goes on in the county. I mean, it could just have to, it could be something to do with, you know, contracts, uh, it could be something to do with the airport. It could be, I mean, there's, there's a host of legal issues obviously to go on that's not, they're not legislative issues.
I mean, if you, if you all don't want to have that information, then we can take it out. I mean, that's, that's up to the council as to what information they want to have, as to what the outside special legal counsel is doing. I think it, I mean, that's my thought on it, but I mean, it's up to you all as a body.
Is, is it possible to walk us through the, I mean, I was trying to read it and understand.
Yeah, but your words, exactly. You, you, you help us with that language exactly.
Um, well, the, the, there are two parts where, uh, details of what these outside local counsel are doing would come before the council. Uh, if you look at bottom of the second page, item G, and I apologize, uh, I messed up my section numbers and used some of them twice. But this would be the first section G, subpart one. Um, and that provides for the council to be informed as promptly as possible of a summary description of each separate matter that is being handled, just a summary description, not the details necessarily of it.
Now, the termination section, Bob, is at the end of section A.
Oh, I thought we were, I thought we were addressing, first of all, the, I mean, yeah, you're right. The termination section is, is at the end of section A, yes. It's there, yeah.
I, I guess the question there would be, what's the best case, worst case scenario? I mean, you know, you're sort of leaving it open-ended. Sure, Wayne, you're, you're, I guess you're kind of leaving it open-ended just in case the worst case scenario develops. There may be an out for the council to stop it, though the council, we would hope, wouldn't exploit that privilege.
Correct. I mean, I'm not suggesting that you should do it, uh, at the drop of a hat or willy-nilly, as I say. But I think you want to have that ability.
I, I, right. Uh, I, I think, I understand your, you know, when I read that, I thought, well, why would that termination be necessary? Because we've already had a lot of the proper amount of funding that we think is necessary. I couldn't think of the worst case scenario that might cause that to come about. Wayne?
Yeah, uh, John, from my, and, and council, from my standpoint, you know, I read the charter section covering the hiring of outside, or special counsel. And to me, it's very clear, uh, that we have to come to the county council. Uh, when we come to the county council, we should have a letter of engagement, should lay out all the details that you're looking for.
Why we're hiring.
Uh, why we're hiring, you know, that firm, uh, or, or that special counsel, uh, how much, uh, it's going to cost. And, and from my standpoint, I don't understand why we need a resolution. It's already in the county charter. It's very clear that we have to come to you, we have to explain ourselves to you, we have to get your approval to hire special counsel. So I'm, I'm puzzled over why we feel that we need a resolution on this.
Any questions from council members? Mr. Taylor?
Well, I think as far as approval is concerned, you normally act by resolution. And that's why a resolution is being proposed. I mean, I think that's the simple answer to what Mr. Strausberg just mentioned.
Would you say that, uh, another part of that might be the fact that we're, uh, we're being, we're trying to be a little more specific on what's being required as far as, um, um, the services and what the cost of the services?
As far as the specifics of the template resolution-
Because it's one thing to approve a legal counsel, it's another thing to limit the expenses that might, we might incur. Is that correct?
Well, I, I, yeah, there's, there's a misunderstanding-
The charter doesn't, the charter doesn't create a limit on expenses.
And, and there's a misunderstanding, I think, too, in the, uh, response by Mr. Wilber. There's no cap. This doesn't provide for a cap, the template. Now, if you want to put a cap on a particular outside legal counsel, you can certainly do that in the resolution. But what I've proposed doesn't have a cap in it. Um, it has a provision where if the unpaid bill hits a certain amount, that it's got to be billed out. So you don't get hit at the end with a large bill. And that if exceeds a certain amount, the bills, they come to council, so you can see what they are. Uh, but there's no cap per se on that. Uh, but yes, I think generally it is to put some, uh, some provisions in on the approval, that, you know, you'd want in the resolution, in, in my opinion. Now, if you, if you all see it differently, then fine. I mean, it would be different, but, um, I've, I've tried to come up with something that I think's reasonable.
Right.
Based to some extent on conversations and, uh, matters that have come before council. And I've heard, uh, concerns and objections raised over the last two years.
Right.
Any other comments, council members?
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at, John, what you're referring to, the end of A.
Right.
And, um, where we say unless otherwise stated herein, the engagement may be terminated by your county executive order to counsel, acting by resolution. It's just, and, and I, I don't know what the right wording there would be, but, you know, it doesn't say anything about, you know, I, I don't want to say with cause. I mean, that's not what I'm, that's not what, quote, I'm trying to say, but, yeah, but there's nothing. It's just, it's, that's so wide open, you know, I mean, does that need, does it need some kind of parameters around that?
I, I mean, to me, I think in terms of a, a legal counsel, you don't want to put any parameters on it. If you don't, uh, want to continue the services with a legal counsel, then you should be able to terminate it. I mean, that's, uh, the rules of, uh, the legal profession certainly, uh, allow a client to do that under any circumstances. If they want to terminate their representation, they can do it. So I, I don't see anything out of the ordinary, is what I'm saying, I guess.
And, um, I mean, it always comes down to that, uh, as I said before, um, how do we know if, um, if it is going to be absolutely necessary, you know? Could there be extreme measures that come into effect where, um, you know, the, the council feels, oh my God, this is getting out of control? If that really is, I, I've never been really a part of that where I, I felt that's happened. Um, I'm looking up, the reason I'm delaying is I'm looking up the provision in the charter, special counsel, the council, the county executive made with the approval of the council employees, special legal counsel to work problems of extraordinary nature and the work to be done is of such character, et cetera. Mr. Taylor, and I, I understand that you, um, are doing what you felt is correct by what concerns council members might have expressed over the last couple of years. Uh, where do you think that, not to put you on the spot, but where do you think this charter provision falls short? Where, where it defines special counsel and what they can or cannot do?
Well, I mean, I, as, again, you're catching me cold. I haven't been asked to review the charter provision a, a, as to how it should be changed, if at all. Uh, it's simply, uh, proceeding under the charter provision that I, that I'm doing.
I think when Mr. Taylor was engaged to do this, it was because the charter is not quite as clear as it should be, right? And we, as a council, decided that it just need, changing the charter's a great task. You know, it has to be voted on in a referendum. And I thought this, that was the point of doing this, um, this resolution was to just kind of make it more of a, uh, more specific, what?
I, I, it may, it may have come about with the fact that we found out sort of in a roundabout way that, that counsel was being hired, uh, without counsel approval.
Right, yeah, that's why.
So I know that, that this is sort of Mr. Taylor's response to that, um, to create a resolution that says, okay, we need to have some real specifics here.
That's right. I mean, that's, as I say, I mean, I've tried to come up with something. Uh, to some extent, I've used things that were being in agreements that we signed, meaning when I was in private practice, over the years where, uh, different employers, if you will.
Right.
Uh, had things in their agreements and I've used some of those. Uh, so it's based to some extent on, uh, experience. But I think it's a reasonable, uh, document.
Any, uh, any other input from council members? Yes, Josh?
I would say I wouldn't, uh, want anything that's, you know, a solution in search of a, was it a solution in search of a problem? You know, that kind of thing. Uh, I don't feel like we need to. I do appreciate the effort to go through it and try to come up with better language, but, um, you know, I guess in general, all we really want is to be able to know, um, to know when special counsel is being hired and, and to know why, and, and then the extent there. I don't know if, uh, you know, if an information sheet or some sort of, uh, yeah, something, if there's a simpler way to do that and maybe, maybe this document would do that. I'm, I'm not quite sure, but, um.
Well, and, and not, not to put words in your mouth, but it kind of sounds like you're alluding to, you know, we just got to be careful that we're not creating any unintended consequences.
Correct.
Yeah, you know, that, or the intent's clear of what we're trying to do and, you know, it seems pretty simplistic. I mean, I'm a big fan of less is more. Uh, and it's pretty, yeah, it's pretty simplistic. Um, you know, pretty direct. Uh, you know, that's, I kind of keep looking at it just to try to put in my mind, you know, any unintended consequences that would result from, uh, I mean, the charter. Like ideally, I mean, the charter already covers this, but, you know, the charter might be too, too, too little.
And I, and I would say this, this is what I call a template resolution. In other words, it's not intended for any specific instance. And it could be changed up or down. As I said, if you want to put a cap on something, you could put that in. There's no cap in this, uh, in terms of the fee. Um, so things could be added, things could be taken out, uh, depending on the particular circumstances.
Understood. And, um, in a sense, the resolution itself isn't really, um, establishing, uh, the structure that this must be followed every single time. Uh, because that would have to be, I think, maybe more clearly defined in the charter. But you're just saying this is going to be available to us if we are to want to, um, have the executive give us the necessary information. Because there's nothing that says, this resolution's a template for us to follow in getting approval for legal counsel. But there's no resolution or charter amendment in place to force this to take effect.
No, no, that, that's right. You can put anything in, in or take anything out of your resolution.
See, this resolution doesn't say the county council must have documentation before approving special counsel.
No, it do- it doesn't. It is a draft, essentially a template resolution to be used as, let's call it, the starting point.
To sort of, uh, I guess, maybe to sort of help, I mean, when the executive were, if the executive were to come to the council per charter in reference to the special counsel, I think the only thing we could, would ask them to do would be to follow this template. Because we are not creating a law that demands that this template be followed.
That's right.
Do you, you following? I mean, we're not passing the law, we're not looking at a work session right now that says we are going to make it the responsibility of the executive branch to bring us a, of a completed template. That is not what we're talking about today. We're only talking about this template. And then we would have to pass some type of legislation, either a charter amendment or some other type of legislation, that would have to enact the authority for this resolution.
No, I don't follow you on that. Essentially, this is saying to the executive is, we would like to follow this form of our resolution and obviously we'll consider changes that you might want, and we might want, meaning the council when I say we, well, that we might want to make. And that's it. I mean, it's essentially a starting point.
But don't you think we would first have to have something in place that says that the executive is required to fill out this information?
No, I mean, you, you, you have, you have the power of approval. I mean, if you don't get the resolution you want, you can't come to some agreement, uh, you don't have to, you don't have to give approval. Or you can give approval with the conditions you want in the resolution. And the, and the executive, if he cares to not go forward on that basis, he can do that.
Yeah, I, um, again, I, I think each time that we would have occasion to hire special counsel, that each circumstance is going to be unique. It's going to be different. And if, if this is intended to provide the executive administration with some guidance as to what information council would like to have in terms of its consideration of hiring special counsel, I mean, that's, I mean, that's fine. Uh, but, but, um, some of the provisions, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with the termination provision. Because typically, if we're hiring special counsel, it's to deal with the, an executive administration issue. If the, if, if council wants us to, uh, update council on the progress of whatever the issue may be, I mean, that's perfectly fine. Uh, but I think to have language as, in, in a boilerplate resolution that gives council the approval, uh, or, or the authority to, in and of itself, terminate an agreement that the county executive has entered into as special counsel, that's troublesome to me.
Well, even if we were to do away with the, the termination clause, I guess the, the real issue at hand is whether or not the council wants to, uh, move forward with a resolution that would establish these requirements. I know that in the past, uh, we have found out, as I said before, we have found out in a roundabout way that, that special counsel had been hired. And it's like pulling teeth to try to find out why they were hired, under what authority they were hired, and how much county funds were spent. True, that's, now, that, to me, that's a violation of the charter. But, um, again, that's the genesis of this resolution.
I, I would say this, I mean, if you have the power to terminate the county attorney, what you do and what you- which you do and which you've recently exercised, that logically, it follows that any special counsel who's hired to do something that the county attorney can't do, should also have that provision in it. I mean, it's just a matter of logic, in my opinion.
I understand. Any other questions?
The logic of that, you know, I'm sitting here trying to think of why we should and why we shouldn't. I think the logic of that would be if we were to discover that, for some reason or another, the attorney wasn't doing exactly what he was hired to do. In other words, sometime in the, in the process of whatever was going on, we found out as a council, or, or any, you know, somebody, like, we find out things sometimes through the, through the rumor mill, unfortunately, that really, that's not what the attorney was working on. So I think, I think having that option, I don't think the council's going to run out and try to get involved in this, you know, naturally. The best thing to do is when you get into these situations, get it over with as soon as possible, because it costs less money.
Absolutely.
But, you know, things happen, whether it's this administration or the one that comes along next, you know. So I think that option for the council to be able to do that would, would be a decent option to have, so.
Mr. Taylor, just for a second, as far as history, what, what circumstances, other words, when, when the executive has to come forward to the council to have approval of special counsel, how would that process differ from what we're looking at here? Or is this the temp, that you're, or that Mr. Taylor is, has come up with, that would make that process easier and more predictable?
What is being presented is a template resolution, as Mr. Taylor has explained, and it would be used for the hiring of special legal counsel, such as bond counsel, a pension attorney, very specialized areas where we need legal expertise. This would be the template resolution, is what is being suggested.
And how would that differ from what we're using currently, if you were to pull a resolution up from last year, the year before?
Unfortunately, this process hasn't been followed, pretty much, in the past. When we did hire the opioid attorneys, the resolution was slightly different. To my knowledge, I'm not aware of any other specialized attorneys that have been approved by resolution in recent years, anyway.
They haven't been approved, period, isn't it, Laura? They've not been approved, period. It's not, there was no resolution, there was no approval at all.
So we're just trying to like, we're trying to fine tune the process.
Understand, understand.
This would just guarantee that the charters be, being followed.
That's clear, okay. The termination, I don't, you know, council, that's going to be up to each of you. I, it really is, this, how you term, you know, who gets that authority?
Well, if you're, if you're, if you're hiring an attorney, okay?
Yeah.
And we present you with an engagement letter, and, and you say, yeah, understand that you need special attorney for this, we've presented you with what, you know, the hourly rate's going to be, you know, what the anticipated expenditure is going to be. The concern I have about termination is that I think the attorney who's being hired is going to look at that and say, well, wait a minute. You know, I'm, I'm, let's say that it's an aviation attorney who, who's working on some aviation issue, because we don't have that expertise here in the county. If they look at it and say, well, you know, I, you know, I can be terminated by the, the county council, and the county council isn't involved in the project or the process that's being, is being negotiated, as if I were that attorney, I, that, that would cause me discomfort. Wait a minute, you know, who's the client here? And to go back to the, to the county attorney, recall that the county attorney, the client of the county attorney is really the county, it's both the legislative branch and the executive branch. So that's different than a special attorney who's being hired to do work for the executive branch. I think there's a real distinction there.
A special attorney can be fired by the executive at any time.
Yes, because it's working, he or she's working for the executive.
For the executive.
And see, that's where I have the angst.
If, if in a particular instance, that provision would forego hiring a super duper attorney, it can be struck. This is a template resolution, as I say.
That's what we're here talking about.
A question that I have is that Mr. Wilber had suggested it, it, there was a cap on this. I don't see where there is a cap, but on the other side of that, flip side, I don't know why there isn't a cap. I really don't. I know that, we were, we were doing a case with that, that nightclub on the north end of town, and every so often, they would send a bill to the county council. And eventually, one day, I said, why do we keep getting these bills for copies, when that, that case was like years ago? I said, I think someone needs to notify that law firm that we are not going to be doing this anymore. And those bills stopped. To this day, I've never found out why.
It's in everybody's best interest to, to mitigate, to the extent that we can, the costs
Right.
of effective representation. So I'm with you on that. My concern with the whole thing was, again, to me, the charter's very clear as to what we have to do, and we should be doing that. And the engagement letter should really give counsel the information that counsel needs to make an intelligent decision as to whether we should hire that attorney. If, if, and, and, and I was concerned that this was going to be a rigid template, this was going to be the resolution utilized for hiring any special counsel. And again, that, that causes me concern. I think that's going to, if, if it's suggested, and we negotiate that each time we come forward with hiring a special attorney, I mean, that's a completely different avenue, I think, you know, to travel.
Well, I mean, we, we can do that, we can do that every time. It is a template, but, but at the same time, we're not going to, unfortunately, we're probably not going to remember that when, you know, six weeks from now, that comes up or something. We might, but, you know, once this language is in there, I'm sure, yeah, we're going to probably be following it, but, yeah, but it's really, it's really tough to put, you want some kind of control over the spending, but then again, unfortunately, with legal cases, you just don't know, you don't know where they're going to go.
And the letters of engagement don't, I'm assuming, haven't really come to this table that often, or at least not.
Not, not that often. Because typically, typically, you know, at least in, you know, my history, John, you know, the times that we've hired special counsel, obviously, each year when we do the bond sale, because that's, you know, that's very specialized.
Right.
But counsel's fully aware of all that, because you do the bond, I mean, that's, you know, that's pretty transparent, I believe. At times, we do hire counsel for things, you know, regarding the pension, or healthcare, or employment issues. We should be bringing that to counsel. I mean, the charter's very clear on that. So, you know, I have no argument there.
Well, I guess my question is, how come it hasn't been?
Well, you know, traditionally, Joe, and I'll go back to when we had, you know, Ed Baker here, you know, Laura, correct me, but I don't recall us doing resolutions.
We did not.
So, you know, it, I would say that we got into the habit of, because we hadn't done it for a long time, that I think it was one of those things where, well, you know, we just do that.
It was habit, like you said.
You know, and, 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 so, so, I don't think, I don't think it has been intentional, it's just, we left that to the county attorney. Hey, if you think you need special counsel, get special counsel. And we didn't do formal resolutions or formal presentations.
This, this comes back to what I touched on before. This work session is discussing a resolution template. But we don't have any resolution or charter amendment that would force the executive branch administration to use that template.
Correct.
We can come up with the greatest template idea in the world today and say, this is great, and it's going to be by consensus unless it's by vote, I don't know how. But we don't have anything that says that this resolution is going to have to be used. We don't have any enforceable means.
Right, that's.
Well, your, your enforceable means is you have the power of approval.
Well, that's what the charter gives us.
That's right. And there's, there's your power.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is that we can take this, this, we can create a resolution and give it to the executive and say, we want you to give us this with that.
Well, I mean, ideally, there would be some discussion and give and take. As I say, it's a template resolution. But the idea is to have a starting point, to have something to begin with, and to work from that.
I understand the point that you're making, John. Again, the concern I have is if it's a rigid, what I would refer to as a rigid template, you're effectively amending the charter, in my opinion. And I don't think that's a place we want to go.
Yeah, I can see that. I can see that. But in, in the other senses that we're just trying, I can see that.
Trying to give us guidance as to what you would like to look at.
Yeah, I can see that.
I get that, I get that part. But I think in some respects, it's a bit overreaching.
So if the council were to, let's say, let's say that we liked everything that was here today, and we said, okay, let's use this template. We gave it to Wayne, said, Wayne, you know, with special counsel, bring this template back. And the, you know, administration comes back and says, no, we're not going to use that template. You know, are we just going to offhandly say, well, you didn't use that template, so, you know, we're not going to approve special counsel?
Well, can't, can't we just give them this and recommend this is the template we would like to see, but not have to adopt this as, do we actually have to adopt this as a resolution?
That's what I'm saying, there's not, yeah, that's what I'm getting at, yeah. The adoption process would be, have to be a charter amendment to put any enforcement into this document.
Correct.
It would have to be a charter amendment
That's correct.
that the council would approve of special counsel and follow this particular procedure.
Mr. President.
Well, if you're, if you're going to make it an absolute ironclad resolution, yes, you'd need an amendment.
That's what I thought, yeah, I got you.
But, you know, to, to kind of take a little bit further what Mr. McCain was saying, if the exec came back and just said, here's a very simple resolution, we're going to hire Joe Blow to do X, Y, Z.
Right.
You have the ability to say, we're going to put some of the stuff, maybe not everything, from the template resolution in our approval resolution.
Right.
PAC 14 needs 30 seconds to change the.
All right.
I have a quick question. So it sounds like there's a lot of history in all this. And I'm just wondering if this history can be put aside, we move forward from here, and work to get this resolved? Because it sounds like we're getting into a lot of detail that may not even happen.
Yeah, I, again, I, I think it's already covered in the charter. And, and I think the council already has the authority to say they are going to allow us to hire or not, and if they are going to allow us to hire, what conditions are going to be placed on us. That's already there, that's already in the charter.
Okay, we have to stop for a second.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay. I got it, I got a hundred percent. I gotta go home too, you know. Anyway, I guess what we're really reviewing here isn't anything that's going to take any legislative path after it leaves this work session. It's only going to be something that we are going to have as a tool to hand to the executive and say, do us a favor. If you want to, if you want the council to approve the special session, fill this out. Now, it's going to be your prerogative to come back to us and say, we don't want to fill it out. Let's say, okay, we won't approve the special session.
Or negotiate it with you.
Try to find a meeting somewhere.
Because again, I think it's going to depend on the circumstances as to why we're hiring, and, and who we're hiring. So it, it's serving as a guideline, but I don't see any issue with that at all.
Okay. Any further discussion? I know we haven't come to a real conclusion on this, but any other discussion on this? Okay, thank you, Wayne.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. entertain a motion to adjourn from my Combe County Council's, that we may convene as the Urban Services Commission?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now reconvened as the Urban Services Commission. The open work session is the annual sewage treatment plant report from Village Downriver Condominium Association. Hang on a sec. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I think this, this is on the agenda at Laura's suggestion, because the shared facility agreement that we've recently renegotiated, the new shared facility agreement, has a provision in it that the condo association is to provide an annual report about the sewage treatment plant. My recollection is, this was put in the agreement at Dallas Baker's suggestion, and it provides for different information on an annual basis. That report was due March 15th, it hasn't been submitted. I think, Laura, you've contacted them once or twice about this.
Actually, Mr. Abresh contacted me today, and has informed me that he does now have the report, and he'll submit it to us this week. The original request was going to be, could we send a reminder letter to them, letting them know that it was past due? But being that it was on the agenda tonight.
Is he head of the condo association? Is that?
He is.
Yeah.
All right, so Mr. Puzi has now turned that over to the condo association?
That is correct.
Yeah, yeah.
And is he going to send us the original, the application that you requested on the date it was due? Or he's just now completing it?
He, this is something that another party is preparing on their behalf, and he just received it himself this past Sunday. So he will bring us the document that was presented to him.
But the document was originally due March 15th?
That is correct. And we did make a few attempts to get the document before tonight.
So will we get, will we get data on, starting on March 15th?
It should cover, the data should cover the prior year.
Yeah, prior calendar year, yeah.
So you're saying that really, our work is done here because we do, we are getting the information we need?
That is correct.
There, well, there are a couple of other things. When Laura mentioned sending him a letter, I went back and looked, because I remembered when we were renegotiating with them, that their groundwater discharge permit, that's essentially to operate the system, that expires December 31st of this year. It's a five-year permit. Right now, that's in the name of TerraFirma. As we were just discussing, he's turned it over to the condo association. Two things need to be done. It needs to be renewed. My understanding is that the regulations require you to apply to renew your permit 90 days before it expires. Why that long, I don't know offhand, but that's my recollection. In any event, I think we need to remind him of that, and the fact that that needs to be changed over to, to the condo association. They're now essentially owning, and they always owned, and now they're operating the system as well. There's also a construction permit that was issued back about 10 years ago, when they developed the project, that that's in the name of TerraFirma. And I believe, while they're checking on their discharge permit, they can certainly ask MDE at the same time, what do they need to do, if anything, to put that over in the name of the condo. And last but not least, they have the common elements of the condominium, which include this packaged sewage plant. It also includes, they have a very nice clubhouse there. We were there, if you remember, a couple of years ago. That, that's all common element, and that's listed in TerraFirma. That, that should be, just as a practical matter, taken care of with the state tax people. So I think, it would be a good idea to just remind him of all those things.
I think the council, if the council wants to do this, the council, of course, I think, should send a letter saying that you do have to renew your application, and with the correct name. As far as all the other, I don't, I don't see how the Urban Services Commission is responsible for the homeowners association's day-to-day operations.
Well, the only, the only involvement of the commission is the fact, under the state law, we're, we're in charge of the administration, generally speaking now, of the situation with the shared facilities.
The facility.
Yeah, in other words, we have, we have an official role, and that's why we have the shared facility agreement. So I think that, and if, if his groundwater discharge permit expired, that would not be a good situation.
No, I'm agreeing with you. The groundwater discharge permit, I think the letter should include that.
Right, and that's all I'm saying. I think it should just be reminded of that in black and white.
And changing the name.
And changing the name, yeah. I mean, we can, we can whip up a simple letter, I don't know that it needs to be reviewed by council, if you're, if you're happy with that and comfortable
Okay.
if you're, if you're happy with that and comfortable with what I've just been discussing, yeah.
Do we have a consensus to get this letter out?
I do.
Question?
Yes, I was just, can the county council have a stop-work permit until he brings these up to date?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Does the county council have the ability to instill a stop-work permit until he's able to bring these things up to date, and the names are transferred, and...
Well, I don't think we could probably do that, because we're not really in that permit chain. In other words, the council, you know, they're not the owner of the facility. They couldn't get the ground, the discharge permit and wouldn't want to. I mean, it's a, hopefully, a simple matter, that it, once they're reminded of it, things will fall into place, because otherwise, I mean, if you stop to think about it, if your groundwater discharge permit expires, and the state comes in and shuts you down, and you want to go to the bathroom, you got a problem.
Hasn't the state issued that letter?
He did say that he applied for the permit renewal.
Okay.
He didn't mention anything about the name change, nor did I, so we can certainly send the letter reminding him of that.
It's just, yeah, it's just, you know, we're, I think we're creating a lot of work for ourselves. It's their responsibility to address this with the state of Maryland. I mean, I understand.
Well, I think, I think because we have that responsibility under the state law, I mean, it's a simple matter to send a letter.
Letter should do it, yeah. I mean, it's okay.
The state just pointed it out to us.
So what?
The state just pointed it out to us.
The what I hear?
You have to speak into the microphone, so the public can hear you as well. I'm sorry.
All right, well, any other discussion?
None.
Yes, Mr. Taylor, any more?
No, not anymore, okay.
All right. I entertain a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Second. All those in favor?